Good evening. Welcome to the Troy City Council October 20th, 2025 meeting. Today's invocation will be given by Mrs. Snee and pledge. Please stand.
Gracious God, thank you for this chance to meet today as colleagues with a common goal of service to the citizens of our community. Help us to use our knowledge, reason, and skills to listen thoughtfully and take action effectively. We give thanks for all those who work in public service, especially those who work in our city. We pray for safety for those serving in the military and our protective services. Thank you that even in challenging times, we can gather together and reinforce our community principles of openness and engagement for all people. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, by the way, if you have your cellphones on, please turn them off for the duration of the meeting. Mrs. Knight, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mr. Schilling?
Present.
Mr. Pierce?
Here.
Mr. Seabird?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mrs. Snee?
Here.
Mr. Widdon?
Here.
Mrs. Westfall?
Here.
Mrs. Marshall?
Move to excuse Mrs. Marshall?
Second.
Motion to excuse Mrs. Marshall by Mr. Pierce, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seabird?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
She is excused.
Thank you. Could you please read the summary of the minutes of the October 6th council meeting?
Minutes of council, October 6th, 2025. The incoming members of the mayor's youth council were introduced. Committee reports, Buildings and Utilities Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing contracting for the sandblasting and painting of clarifiers at the wastewater treatment plant. Finance Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing an increase in the construction management at risk contract with Peterson Construction Company at the water treatment plant. Committee recommended legislation be prepared declaring certain items as surplus and authorizing the sale of those items. Law and Orders Committee recommended that legislation be prepared regarding the annexation petition filed by 5.592 acres from Staunton Township, the trader annexation 2025, that there would be three pieces of legislation to be submitted. Committee recommended that regarding the Brownfields environmental cleanup of 1375 South Union Street, there be authorization to enter into a subsipient grant agreement with the county and also authorizing professional services agreement with Burgess and Neifel to do certain assessment and remediation work. Personnel Committee gave an oral report regarding an appointment to the city beautification committee, which was approved. Resolution number R 50, 2025, authorizing the painting and painting work at the clarifiers for the wastewater plant was given first reading and adopted. Resolution number R 51, 2025, subsipient grant agreement with Miami County and also professional services agreement regarding the 1375 South Union Street cleanup was given first reading. Resolution number R 52, 2025, increasing authorization for the CIMAR contract with Peterson Construction at the water treatment plant was given first reading and adopted. Resolution number R 53, 2025, establishing municipal services for a 5.592 acre area to be annexed, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R 54, 2025, authorizing buffer requirements for that same territory to be annexed was given first reading and was adopted. Resolution number R 55, 2025, consenting to the annexation of 5.592 acres from Staunton Township was given first reading was adopted. Ordinance number O 26, 2025, authorizing the sale of certain municipal property after declaring that it was surplus was given first reading and adopted. While in various comments, council adjourned at 7:38 PM.
Move to accept the minutes?
Second.
Motion to accept the minutes by Mr. Widdon, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seabird?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Those minutes are approved.
Thank you. Can we please read the summary of the minutes of the special meeting on October 13th?
Minutes of council, October 13th, 2025, special meeting of council. The reading and acknowledgement of the notice of special meeting took place. The council then recessed into executive session at 6:40 PM, returned to regular session 8:39 PM, made no comment, and adjourned.
Move to accept the minutes. Is ready. Motion to accept, Mr. (cough) excuse me, Twist, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Seabird?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Moving on to committee reports. We'll start tonight with finance and Mr. Seabird.
Thank you for my (inaudible) for my please to court. Thank you, Mr. President. I have three reports tonight. The first one is a three-year professional service agreement with Trimble Inc. for computer-related software services. This committee met October 13th to consider a three-year agreement with Trimble Inc. for computer-related software services used by several departments for functions including utility, asset management, and work order tracking. The company that provided these services for many years has been sold, and the new company has requested a three-year agreement and has further requested the agreement be executed by the end of October. The Director of Law has determined that this would qualify as a sole source vendor agreement. It is a recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into a three-year sole source agreement with Trimble Inc. of Westminster, Colorado, for computer-related software services at a cost not to exceed $44,000 each year of the agreement. To have the agreement executed by the end of October, this committee supports emergency legislation. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Schilling, Mrs. Westfall, and myself as chairman.
Any questions? Continue, please.
Thank you. The second report I have is the acceptance of additional and future opioid settlement agreements. The committee met October 13th to consider acceptance of additional national opioid settlement agreements as well as the most efficient way to process future agreements. It is a recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to include authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute opioid settlement agreements and related documents with Kroger, Purdue, and secondary manufacturers, Eye Vision, Amneal, Apotex, Hikma, Indivoreal, Mylan, Sun, and Zitis. Authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute future opioid settlement agreements and related documents presented to the city for approval that conform to any requirement of the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding. In that the above listed agreements need to be returned as soon as possible, this committee supports emergency legislation. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Schilling, Mrs. Westfall, and myself as chairman.
I have one question. Have we received opioid money before?
Yes, we've been for the last couple of years, yes.
Have we spent any of it?
Yeah, we've spent it on a few things in police and fire related to training and miscellaneous equipment. It was part of the budget process. It's a separate fund, 252, I believe.
Your third and final one?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the increased authorization for fleet maintenance for 2025. This committee met October 13th to consider requests to increase the authorization for the fleet maintenance contract for 2025 by $50,000. This is based on a recent large repair that may impact the remaining balances of the contract. It is a recommendation of the committee that legislation be prepared increasing the authorization for the fleet maintenance contract for 2025 to $475,000 so that the authorization is in place if needed for the final invoices. That's respectfully submitted, Mr. Schilling, Ms. Westfall, and myself as chairman.
Any questions on that one? Thank you very much. Moving on to law and ordinance. Mr. Widdon?
Thank you, Mr. President. This committee met October 13th to consider the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission that the final plat of the reserves at Cliff Oaks subdivision Phase II and dedication of right-of-way be approved. Phase II is in general conformance with the approved preliminary plan. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared accepting the final plat of the reserve at Cliff Oaks subdivision Phase II and dedication of right-of-way. Respectfully submitted by Mrs. Marshall, Mr. Twist, and myself as chairman.
Questions, comments? Continue.
Thank you, Mr. President. This committee also met on October 13th to consider the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission that the final plat of the Shiv cigar residence subdivision and dedication of right-of-way be approved. The final plat is in general conformance with the approved preliminary plan. The subdivision will consist of just this one section. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared accepting the final plat of the Shiv cigar residence subdivision and dedication of right-of-way. Respectfully submitted by Mrs. Marshall, Mr. Twist, and myself as chair.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to safety and health. Mr. Twist?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two reports this evening. The first is on the health district funding. The committee met October 13th to discuss the 2026 funding for the Miami County Health District. Troy funding is based on the millage equivalent that will be paid by the other political subdivisions in the county for the public health services. Troy's payment is funded from the general fund, and Troy's 2026 funding would be $420,104.13, an increase of approximately 1.9% over 2025. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to approve the 2026 funding to the Miami County Health District for public health services for Troy citizens in the amount of $420,104.13 that is submitted by Todd Seabird, Jeffrey Widdon, and myself as Chair, William Twist.
Questions on health district? Continue, please.
For the second reports on cybersecurity program adoption, the committee also met on October 13th to discuss HB 96, which requires council to adopt the city cybersecurity program that safeguards the city's data, information technology, and information technology resources to ensure availability, confidentiality, and integrity. The program implementation due date is January 1st, 2026. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared for council to adopt a cybersecurity program as required by HB 96, submitted by Todd Seabird, Jeffrey Widdon, and myself as Chair, William Twist.
Any questions over cybersecurity? Thank you, sir. Treats and sidewalk, Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, sir. This committee met October 13th regarding the speed limit of a portion of Swales Road on Swales Road between Peters Road and Nashville Road. Portions of the road are currently located in and out of the City of Troy Corporation limit. The existing speed limit for the city portion is 25 miles per hour and is a 55 mile per hour zone for the unincorporated portion of the roadway. Having a consistent speed limit will help make enforcement easier, and 45 mile per hour is preferred by the city and the county. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to submit a request to ODOT to perform or review the study related to the speed limit of Swales Road between Nashville and Peters Road within the corporation limits and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to establish speed limits for the roadway area based on the response of ODOT. A similar request will be made by the county engineer for the roadway portion not in the city. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Schilling, Mrs. Westfall, and myself as Chair.
Any questions on speed? Thank you, sir. Congratulations for all the pronunciations of all the unusual names and drugs and drug companies. Moving on, citizen's comments. Your time to come up. We'll time you at two minutes, name and address for the record if you want to talk about anything on our agenda tonight. See, everybody's rushing up. Everybody's holding their comments until later, and we will move on to resolutions. Mrs. Knight, could you please read Resolution R 51, 2025, please?
Resolution number R 51, 2025, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into a sub subsipient grant agreement with the Miami County Land Reutilization Corporation and entering into a professional services agreement with Burgess and Neifel Inc. of Columbus, Ohio, related to the Ohio Department of Development Brownfields remediation program for the environmental cleanup of 1375 South Union Street, Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This was reported on at the prior meeting. This is the second reading.
Move to suspend?
Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Widdon, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seabird?
Yes.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Widdon, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seabird?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Would you please read Resolution R 56, 2025?
Resolution number R 56, 2025, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into a sole source professional services agreement with Trimble Inc. of Westminster, Colorado, for software services and declaring an emergency. This will be a three-year agreement, cost not to exceed $44,000 each year of the agreement first reading.
Move to suspend?
Second.
Motion to suspend, Mr. Pierce, seconded by Mr. Widdon. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seabird?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Widdon, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seabird?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on, can we read Resolution R 57, 2025, please?
Resolution number R 57, 2025, a resolution authorizing recommendation to opt in to the opioid settlement agreement with Kroger, Purdue, and secondary manufacturers, Alvegan, Amneal, Apotex, Hikma, Invisor, Mylan, Sun, and Zitis, and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute agreements and documents related thereto and execute future such settlement agreements and documents related thereto that conform to the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, previously authorized by Troy City Council, and declaring an emergency, first reading.
Move to suspend?
Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Widdon, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seabird?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mrs. Westfall, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seabird?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Would you please read Resolution R 58, 2025?
Resolution number R 58, 2025, resolution amending Resolution number R 64, 2022, increasing the authorization for the fleet maintenance contract for calendar year 2025. This will increase the 2025 contract by $50,000 to amount not to exceed $470,000, and this is the first reading.
Move for suspension?
Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seabird?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Seabird?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Moving on to Resolution R 59, 2025. Could you please read that?
Resolution number R 59, 2025, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with the Miami County General Health District for health services. This is an increase over the current year of 1.9% for a total not to exceed $420,104.13, first reading.
Move to suspend?
Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Pierce, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seabird?
Yes.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mrs. Westfall, seconded by Mr. Widdon. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seabird?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Okay. Would you please read Resolution R 60, 2025, please?
Resolution number R 60, 2025, resolution authorizing the implementation of the cybersecurity plan of the City of Troy, Ohio pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 964 and declaring an effective date. This is the first reading, and this is in response to the legislature recently enacting HB 96 requiring such plan, first reading.
Move to suspend or second? Move to suspend by Mr. Widdon, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seabird?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Move to adopt?
Second.
I'm sorry. Second? Snee, or adopt and then Snee was second. Motion to adopt, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
I think that was reversed.
Reverse. Or whatever. Sorry, I got distracted. My fault. It's okay.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seabird?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Can we move to our last resolution, R 61, 2025?
Resolution number R 61, 2025, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to request that the Director of the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, perform review of a study related to the speed limit of Swales Road between Nashville Road and Peters Road and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to establish a speed limit for that roadway area based on the response of ODOT. This is the first reading. The county will also be submitting a request for review, first reading.
Move to suspend?
Second.
One more time. Mr. Phillips?
And second?
Seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seabird?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall? Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Please call the roll. We'll get back on track soon.
Sorry.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Now I have a question that's causing all this confusion. Back on Resolution R. fifty-one, Mrs. Westfall, if we have a procedure, she would like to change her vote to abstain as opposed to yes, since it deals with the possible county land utilization corp.
On issues of abstention like that, without objection, I think there's no question that she could do that. We just need to register it in the minutes. And Mrs. Westfall, that needs to indicate
Yes, I want to abstain.
To avoid the appearance of a conflict of interest, and is that on the suspension and on the adoption?
Correct.
Both, okay.
Okay. Now I think we're back on track.
This resolution was adopted.
Now we'll move on to ordinances.
Yes.
Could you please read ordinance O. twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five, please?
Ordinance number O. twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five. Ordinance accepting the final plat of the reserves at Cliff Oaks subdivision Phase Two in the City of Troy, Ohio, and dedicating right-of-way. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission, first reading.
Move for suspension?
Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Widdon. Please call the roll.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mrs. Westfall, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. Our last ordinance for tonight, could you please read O. twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five?
Ordinance number O. twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five. Ordinance accepting the final plat of the Shiv cigar residence subdivision in the City of Troy, Ohio, and dedicating right-of-way. This has also been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission and complies with the preliminary plan, first reading.
Move to suspend the rolls?
Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Widdon, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes. Move to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you very much. Any communications or announcements this week?
No, sir.
Comments? Mayor, Ebony?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
All righty. Service and Safety Director, Mr. Tidgerton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Halloween is Thursday, and
It's out of order. The timing's out of order, not you, sir.